Okay, I'd like to call the order of the committee of the whole meeting on February 28th. I'd like to welcome everybody to the traditional territory of Squamish Nation. I'm going to move, I would like to move over to the adoption of the agenda. We've got Councilor Kent, second we've got Councilor Fire. All in favor, opposed, motion is carried. Okay, and we're just looking for Christine Matthews to join us. We're going to be looking at the 2017 to 2021, doing a budget workshop.
Thank you Chair. Just, I'm wondering if, did you change your plans out of the room in terms of talking about the correspondence?
I was going to pull, when we get into correspondence, just pull the correspondence and then we can have the approach that they've come to speak to.
Okay, great, thank you. So, attached in your package, you have several pieces of correspondence in terms of further public feedback. The communications have gone out and put on the website that this is a last sort of date that we wouldn't receive any further. And this represents all of the different feedback we received. Today, we're here to just talk about a couple of key issues that have also been rooted toward to the group in terms of some of the other outstanding issues that Councilor Blackwell sent back through us. And beyond that, really, we're about to see if we're comfortable with where we're at and whether we're ready to go to that or not. There was some concern that maybe rates were still, our overall financial planning level was still too high. And so, we're essentially circling back to see if you'd like it reduced, then we really should have it reduced. So that's sort of the basic front of today. I know that we do have people in the audience who are close ones, so that would be my one thing is if you want to tackle that correspondence first and ask them these particular questions, you can let me know how. Then we can move back. But with the taxation piece, I believe Council understands, you're setting a financial plan and that's a level of overall tax revenue which you're going to require. And then, when the revised rule comes through, we'll go back and we'll revisit, how will we disperse that revenue? And at that point, I think Council probably has a few different questions around how do we tax business? How do we tax light industry? How do we tax the port? And I think that to take anything in isolation of that would be difficult because we need to see the impacts. So where I think it could be important to you today is if you, there's not a lot of room for that. We're going to meet your effective targets around effective tax rate increase. Obviously, if you wanted to give a bigger rate than the ratios we established last year for one area, whether it's business, light industry, or the port, then obviously that could impact the effective tax rate that we need to apply overall to still come out with the overall revenue. So that's really the interface between the taxation piece and deciding on the final. So today, what we're looking for is whether or not you need, because of that factor, you need to go back in and rethink your financial plan, lower that. Or whether you're comfortable with where you're at with financial plan and you're comfortable taking that exercise to another meeting, maybe Finance, not a committee, when we have the revised rule, when we have the revised rule, you can really truly know what it looks like. Those are kind of the key factors today.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Attorney Mayor Chappelle. There were a list of a couple of items that Council and I think anybody wanted to talk specifically today and I have them here whenever anyone wants to.
Okay, thank you. Let's go to the correspondence, since Mrs. Lowe has come from the court. It should be great to hear from her and I'll just pull that correspondence. Is there any other correspondence that Council is interested in filling for discussion?
Number five.
Number five. Okay, do you want to come to the table and speak?
Sure.
Thank you, Attorney Mayor Chappelle and Councilor. I appreciate your time. We didn't prepare a presentation because our letter was, we hoped outlined sort of where we were at and what our ask was, was to have an opportunity to speak to you one more time before the budget is finalized in regards to our ask for the term relief. Today, I brought with me John Shepchak. John is our legal counsel, but in addition to having been with us for many, many years. Very before my time even, John. Part of John's practice is assessment. And he used to be a legal counsel for B.C. Assessment between 1988 and 2013. So John has a wealth of knowledge and really can answer any of the technical side of things way better than I can. So thanks for joining, John. Really, we want an opportunity to see if you had any other questions further to not only the meeting you had January 23rd and also our current letter that we sent on February 17th. So I first open it up if there are any questions.
Yeah, thanks. And I'm sorry you weren't here last time. But as far as like incremental increases to get up to this, can you explain that?
Sure, to get.
How long that'll take, for a couple of years? Like right now, we're not giving you the tax rate, so you're paying extra taxes. And if we did give a tax rate on incremental increases, how long would it take to get to where we are today?
Okay, let's clarify that a little bit.
Sure. The key thing is that it's on a long-term basis and Council's going to be able to review it year by year. If there's any break given at all this year. And in terms of incremental, it's not an incremental basis that we're looking at necessarily. Although, that would certainly, I can envision how that would work as well. The key thing is to remember that we're doing, we also have an initiative ongoing with the province. And the initiative with the province is to get us into a situation where Squamish Terminals is operating on the same base as everyone else. There was, I watched the video of the last meeting and there was a reference to the substance, but not the name of the regulation that we're looking at. It's, the competitors of Squamish Terminals, particularly in the portland, benefit from a regulation that exempts the berth corridor improvements. And it's that sort of benefit that is creating a disincentive for us. It's not just us though, it's other people who have terminal facilities along the coast. And so, what we're trying to do is get ourselves in a position where we get that benefit and then the impact that we would have from the full rate of taxation will be alleviated. Counselor, raise your, you.
No, I'm following, I think.
Well, I mean, how can we help you get that?
So there's, yeah, there's two things. One is the interim relief until we get to that place. Because, and John can speak a little bit to the process we've undertaken so far on the provincial side. But it's going to take a little bit of time. And because there are other terminals or entities that are in the same position, there is an impetus of the province based on our conversation from the letters we're getting today to help facilitate this process and work through it with us. So it's not like we see this as a long drawn out process. It's just how it's going to take a little bit of time, whether that's a year or two years, we can't say at this point. But we think you can help in that process once, or hopefully, once we get to a stage where we're asked to provide more information, then we can perhaps come back to Council saying we need a letter of support or something like that. But in the interim, we're still stuck with a 68% tax increase if we're going to stay as is because of the loss of the dock and having to rebuild it.
To give you a better sense of timing, my discussions with the provincial people who are mandated to try to do something about this, they're looking for implementation in the 2018 rule. Who are trying to do the groundwork during 2017, have it in place and timed under the assessment acts that it can become effective for the next year's rule.
Thank you. My understanding is that 27.5 is the mill rate, the capped mill rate for port. And my understanding is that with new construction, such as the berth, there is in legislation existing some kind of a phase-in period. There's a lesser rate on at least a portion of the interest.
22.5%. I've had interesting discussions with the Ministry of Finance on how that formula works. Basically, I first went to B.C. Assessment and they said, "So what effect would this have on our new dock?" And they said, "We haven't a clue." Whenever, and I say that in fairness, when we are asked these questions, we hand it over to the Ministry of Finance. So I said, "So who do you talk to?" And so they gave me the name, so I phoned up the fellow. He gave, he was very helpful, he gave me a spreadsheet that has this formula that it's just impossible to deconstruct. And, but the net result right now, when they punched that out, was a reduction of about $22,000 in taxes. We're looking at about a $400,000 increase in that. So the, according to that calculation, the actual tax relief is pretty minimal. And that's why we're here. If that particular formula was of assistance, we wouldn't have to be imposing upon the district for some consideration. And it would be great if your finance, your staff finance people could have that discussion with the Ministry of Finance and see if that's what's the number that's going to crank out. We can provide our correspondence with the ministry and the formula. And if somebody figures it out, maybe they can tell me how it works, but about 22 grand was there.
So, Counselor, I have had a chance to talk to Duncan Gillan, Mr. Minister of Industry. He has indicated to us that it's roughly a 4.5% level of assessment that we can follow for the 22.5%. And the reason that the full $9 million of the port is not available, as I understand it, is that the portion of the port was just, it was a replacement. And they, that had been depreciated almost to the full value when it was replaced. So they provide the 22.5% improvement. So additional things that the port did to improve the dock. That's my understanding of what they are basing the 22.5 on, which is why the full $9 million of the dock is not being approved to that 22.5%.
And it's not just the, and the 22.5% is not applied against the full $4 million. What happens is some sort of calculation that goes year by year. And again, it's, I've spent considerable amount of time with it, maybe you, Chris, you have. And it somehow allocates for various number of years, but comes up with a fairly small number at the end of the day.
So we think, I believe it's applied for a 10-year period on improvement. I can't speak to what's going to happen next year, but they have provided you with assessment value. I'd be using the best way to, and it's just under 4.5%.
So just a quick question.
And they'll confirm that in a minute.
Yeah, excellent. Thank you so much, Christine, for the correspondence. So the dock was completely depreciated beforehand and then with the, it wasn't completely depreciated?
No, it wasn't completely depreciated, but the, under the Class 4 regulations, unless you're in a closure mode, the most you can depreciate down to is 80% depreciation. And it was at 80%.
It was at 80% and then they're, but they're not charging the 20% improvements?
I'm sorry?
They're, they're charging on the full improvements from zero to rebuild the whole dock, not just on the depreciation and the.
That's exactly it, because there is a new dock.
Thank you, I understand that a lot more now, thanks. Jason?
Okay, so yeah, my first question was going to be what the order of magnitude is because the letter doesn't have any numbers in it, which I thought was odd, but anyway. I also think it's odd that we would be going to the province to ask them to take measures to reduce our revenue. I don't really, I understand why you would do that.
Could I address that for a moment?
Yes.
When the 27.5% tax cap was put in place, along with that was a grand in lieu of taxes that was made available too. And that's been indexed at CPI each year since 2009. So the, what has happened in past circumstances, for example with the port, is that when there was concessions given on the berth corridor improvements that effectively created a tax relief, there was a consequential payment in lieu to the districts that were affected for those. So it's not, we're not asking you to support us in getting rid of revenue. What we're asking you to do is support us with the province so that we have a plan of the tax exemptions coupled with the compensation that is applied in the berth corridor improvements.
So perhaps I'm not understanding this clearly though. So the request, as I understand it right now, is we're looking at probably a shortfall of revenue in the order of $380,000 for this year. But in future years, we're hoping that there'll be grants that will cover that.
No, what I'm suggesting and what the Squamish Association suggested is, we're not asking you to reduce the taxes we've been paying. We're actually asking you to maintain the level of taxes we've been paying. And that's important because the, as we say, it wasn't like we wanted to lose the dock. We went out and had a fire and had to deal with that. And all the additional expenses that go with it to build the new dock. So the amount that we're actually asking that be set in taxes for the terminal is higher than the duck from Squamish Terminals last year?
No, I understand that. However, if we were not to take action, the amount that we would get would increase substantially. So what I'm asking is, and I'm very clear about the ask here. And you know, I'm not going to support it. I don't think this is a role of a municipality. And I just, you know, we also have to keep in mind that we worked really hard to get to a budget that is still going to increase people's taxes by 5%. If we give up another $340,000 in revenue, then we're going to be looking, that's another tax point right there. So it's just, it's very difficult. I mean, I understand the predicament, but you know, private sector, you know, there's risks in private sector. That's why there's plans around that and I don't support that.
Well, thank you, Counselor Blackwell. If I could just say a couple of things. One, the number is, has been discussed in terms of what the number is and was presented, but in the November 8th time when we presented to Council. So we talked about the number in general terms. It is a 68% increase, which is in essence about, what's the number?
Four.
Yeah, 400,000. So I understand the difficult position you're in in terms of making the right decisions around budgeting and all that good stuff. Having said that, we believe that because of the unfortunate situation with the dock, that it is something that we believe we could rally around or try and figure out at least something that would be palatable to support a major employer who's been supporting the community for 45 years and wants to continue to do so. And this is a major impact on the terminal, no question about it. So as much as I am concerned about my own property tax and what I pay in this community as a resident, I'm also concerned about the 100 people I employ and how we can support this business quite forward. And that's why we're here, asking for your support.
Karen?
So I just want to clarify through the chair to Christine. So Counselor Blackwell mentioned tax increase, but it's, I'm not sure that we have a tax revenue shortfall with what the port is proposing. So they're proposing to pay the same as last year, which I think our budget would have been based on. No, you've anticipated the increase. So our budget revenue need is based on the port paying the full 65% increase.
So let me.
Thank you.
So in terms of financial plan, we have a revenue requirement. That takes into account the amount that, sorry, John, I don't know. Not your last.
Shepchak.
Mr. Shepchak had indicated to me, sorry, had indicated that we do receive an in lieu to when that Property Port Tax Act came out, there is a compensation to the municipality and the province to give the ports this rate, is what it was considered at the time. Because most people had them up at the industrial rates. And as you know, most municipalities do hit the industry fairly significantly. And a whole other philosophical conversation for Council, preferably on another day when we're really looking at taxes with revised revenue. But philosophically, the average across the provinces right now at about 31, but it used to be considerably higher. And so when this Property Port Tax Act came out, they basically compensated us. So in the budget, we do assume that we're going to receive that $100,000 before, as part of that whole revenue makeup to come to our general taxation that we still need to collect. We do take that into consideration. But the general taxation number of 26 million, then we put that into a tax model and we say, "How are we going to distribute that? And how does non-market change affect that, right? In terms of our assessment base having that?" And under that modeling, based on a completed rule, which is at risk, as you know, from our last conversations I was in here, came out for the port paying approximately $221,000 rather than last year. Because they had a non-market change. They actually improved their assessment position. And there's lots of arguments around, that's true for every business. That is true for every business. If you went and improved your business, you would receive a higher assessment and you would probably be taxed more. That's how this system works. So hopefully that explains. When we're talking and bending around that effective tax rate of about 5%, what we're doing is we're saying, how much do we have, with the cap in mind of 27.5 and 22.5, because we have some preliminary numbers in place. If I take those things into account, how much do I have to lift all of the other rates to still come out to the tax rate number I need? And that was just under 5%. If you change this, so that we change those caps down for the port, the 5% is going to go up. It has to, right? You have to make up the total tax revenue. So yes, it will impact your other taxpayers. Was it factored into the budget? Sort of, and because we're not just talking about the 7.7% we were going to increase in terms of tax revenue, we're talking about what might that look like in terms of tax rate increases. So that's how all that relates. We have, I did have an opportunity to talk to Duncan Gillan, Mr. Minister of Industry. He is their expert on port taxes, et cetera. I asked him about what if we could support the port in berth corridor, what would that look like for us? Is it a slam dunk, we'd get a bill? The answer was no. There is no slam dunk that we would get a bill. So even if we support the port in getting their berth corridor, your revenue could come down. Because if they get the berth corridor status and become exemption, I'm not sure there will be remedies from the province to do that, to fix that. I'm not sure if there will be remedies from the feds to do that yet. And again, Duncan's opinion was he couldn't speak for the federal government, but he said they're not back forthcoming with bills anymore. So it is something to consider for Council in terms of how do we support the port without compromising the revenue position for the municipalities. Lots of things on the table to consider, for sure.
Okay, I'm going to go to Ted and then Doug and then Nick.
Yeah, thanks. Well, I've heard 400,000 and I've heard 221,000.
The 221, the 400 that I was referring to was an estimate based on, I don't have your internal work. So the 221 is likely that the closer figure that we're dealing with.
And it's just the municipal, right?
That's right.
So they will be taxed on top of that for the other agencies which we've done off.
And the 400,000 would be taken into account, school tax, the finance assessment, B.C. assessment, et cetera. So it's not just the municipal amount that we're giving.
Well, I mean, for me, it's just the municipal amount.
Of course.
And you know, that's why I was kind of talking about incremental. What kind of incremental increases can we have and how would that play out for us to eventually get this 221? And you know, to, well, I guess a little bit to Jason's point. I mean, I do think that Squamish Terminals is a large employer and they did have a mindset. You know, I think we can, should help a little bit. Now with the dock, I heard also someone say there was added things. Like I know there's added things that wasn't on the dock before. Is this 221 based on those added things or is it across the board? Because I know you took a dock for a tugboat now and you know, there's a bunch of other stuff that wasn't there on the old dock, so.
And over time, those improvements have been added into our assessment and we pay taxes on.
So in the tugboat, for example, that's, you were already collecting taxes on the tugboat station.
Well, that wasn't there before.
It was there before the new dock.
Oh, was it?
Yes. Yeah, it's been there for, since at least 2013, I believe.
Maybe you've added a couple of buildings. I remember investing in the terminals, just that the dock is such a major, you know, investment.
So anyway, I mean, 221,000 is one point approximately, I guess, say.
It's approximately 1%.
And so, you know, I would like to hear some discussion on if anyone's interested on incrementally increasing it because, yes, if the province isn't going to give you any cuts, then this will be the money you get.
And just to clarify, may I, Counselor Chappelle, it's a 1% on our tax revenue requirement. How that pushes down into the tax model would have to be rerun and it could have a more drastic impact on that. So we have, we have to model that and see what the impact of that would be.
Okay, Doug?
Well, thanks. And that was one of my questions, because there were two numbers out there. And so regardless of our decision, you're still faced with the other $180,000, I take it, because that's the school and regional district, et cetera, et cetera. So we're talking about the 221. The question I had was, and I think we might have talked about it, but I just want to be clear on it. Generally speaking, municipalities are not able to support a private business by legislation. And if we did this, we would certainly be supporting a private business. Is there some exception in ports?
There is, there's a letter that I sent in January that addressed it. And under the Port Property Tax Act, it sets a maximum amount, not a minimum amount. And it allows the municipality to set the tax rate for ports within that range of 0 to 27.5%. There's two sections, two parts of the Section 3. One is setting the 27.5%. The other one is specifically saying that the rate can be different for ports that have Class 4 properties. So that's it. When we met with Chris in November, that was our first concern. How is this not business assistance? And so, Section 25, I had to deal with Section 25 before chartering. In my letter in January, I explained it. And the letter that we got back from stock in the beginning of February, I believe, has said they agreed with my opinion, but that it wasn't an appetite at that time to have the port.
So basically, because there's only one port property in our assessment area, we can deal with that rate? I guess at our discretion.
If you had two ports and two other Class 4, you could still do it under the legislation.
Individually.
Individually.
So it's under the Property Port Tax Act under Section 3 and it says specifically under Section 3.3, if a municipal tax rate that would otherwise apply to property subject restrictions under subsection 1, which is, is greater than the rate permitted in that subsection, the municipality may impose municipal tax rate on property that is different from the municipal tax rate imposed on Class 4 property. I was reading that before, honestly, to be around us being able to have different Class 4 rate than what we were being forced to use for this. But Mr. Shepchak?
Very well.
Has outlined for me that with that clause, had, obviously, I relived it and went, hmm, you know what? That does seem to override community charter legislation.
And the portion of Section 25 of the community charter says, "No business assistance unless an enactment provides otherwise." And the port, that's an important part of the tax act.
Thank you. So I think this brings up a philosophical discussion that's bigger than today. And, but I do think it's worth a discussion with our tax rates and when we discuss our, when we discuss the allotment of our taxes. So thank you so much for coming, I appreciate you guys. Did you, do you guys have more questions?
Not a question, I was going to leave them with a comment. I understand we're not making a decision today, but I just wanted to somehow respond to the presentation. And I have to, I'm having concerns with this, I'll be frank with you. Ports are already capped, as Matthew said, below what the general population of industrial property pays in British Columbia. 27.5, I know, because that's the rate that wood fiber might become subject to, is below the provincial average for relating, in relation to residential. It's about 5.5 to 6 to 1 versus the provincial average is 7.5 to 1. So already, it's a bit of a favored rate compared to other Class 4 properties. There is a small adjustment by legislation. There is a small adjustment by legislation, as we've talked about, around the discount for new construction, rather than minor, but that's what the legislation provides and that's what's kind of imposed on us. And for us to go further than that, I think, is difficult for the municipal government. If you can persuade the province to be competitive with Metro Vancouver ports, I understand that and I, I'm not sure if we can actually support it, but I would certainly understand that. And the other difficulty, though, and you highlighted it partly in your letter, is we are, as a population in Squamish, facing significant, not increases generally over the whole rate class, over the whole population, but there are going to be spikes all over the place because of the way the residential assessments worked out last year. There's correspondence and agenda of one that's up around sixty-eight percent and the average is somewhere around thirty-five to forty. That person's going to get nailed, just the way the assessment things works. And that person is not the only one. I've heard of many. So for us, you're going to get nailed, unfortunately, almost in the same fashion. For us to favor you over those people where we really can't grant any relief is politically very difficult, I think, for me, I'll speak for myself.
Comment?
And I'll come back, I just want one other point. We're also, you are, at the moment, our one class four property and wood fiber is kind of coming on screen now. And we're embarking on a negotiation, a tax agreement with them. I have personal views on the way that should unfold. And discounting taxes is not one of them, to be frank. And so I think this sends the wrong message to that negotiation as well. So I'd be concerned about it in that respect. So it's not a decision today. We may have other discussions on it, but I just want you to know how I'm feeling right now.
Couple of comments, if I may. The twenty-seven-point-five percent is a little bit lower than the average, as you pointed out. The average is, as Chris mentioned, thirty to thirty-one per thousand. But one of our competitors resides in Surrey and their class four rate there is nineteen-point-five, all-in, not the general, not just the municipal. So you can find examples through the province of where, and particularly among our competitors, they've got a better tax structure than we've got. Second thing is, the twenty-seven-point-five percent is only taking into account the taxes that we pay and not the revenue you get from the government, which then raises the ratio or the assessment to fifty-four dollars per thousand instead of twenty-seven-point-five. So I think you have to look at all of the revenue, not just the taxes that are coming from Squamish, because the government's chipping in three-hundred-and-fifty thousand a year adjusting for CPI to make up that difference in the class four rates. So in the scheme of things, it's not just twenty-seven-point-five percent that you're getting in taxes. And I've explained that in my letter.
And I have difficulty, I clearly understand the difficulty around what you're in the decision, but I also have difficulty seeing how providing an interim relief is setting precedent, however that's defined. I mean, we haven't gotten to that, but you know, whether that's interim relief at X percent for X amount of time, I mean, we haven't even gotten to that part of the discussion yet. So right now, it sounds like, you know, from some councillors I'm hearing, an absolute no. But others may be willing to look at, you know, at some sort of striking a balance somewhere. That's, we're open to having those conversations as well. I mean, I think that's what's important, is that we try and deal with something that's a huge hit to the terminal and that we are trying to navigate through with the province and hopefully find a long-term solution to, to asking for support on the interim measure.
Thank you. Do you want to respond to that?
I was just going to, I did counsel, but again, based on the completed rule, we did just, I did only temporary run the VC averages based on last year that are available in the statistics. So as it would stand right now, if we stayed with the same ratios, it is true that the provincial ratio is sitting average is sitting at seven-point-two-five. And right now, the port would be sitting at, with the library, would be sitting at about eight-point-one-five. So a little bit over the VC average right now in terms of averages, and that includes port and non-port property in terms of ratio to residential. Having said that, the burdens are widely different and most municipalities have a broader major industry fold in the now. So from a burden perspective, it changes. And we have, the burden for us going to the port is two percent. The provincial average is eight-point-eight percent for the major class. So, you know, just to give you some, it's hard to compare municipality to municipality because we all have different factors, different assessment breakouts.
Chris, the eight percent is spread over a larger number of class four operators, whereas here about two percent is directed at one taxpayer.
Doug, did you want to?
Well, just to clarify, you said two things. So the number I was thinking of was twenty-seven-point-five, and these are a couple of years old, was five and a half times the residential rate versus the VC average of somewhere around six and a half to seven times the residential rate for general heavy industrial. So you said the port plus the library, is the, how's the library involved in this?
Well, because we combine our tax rate plus, there's, we're still paying up the library debt, that's a component of the municipal rates, so we combine those two together. And so without it, let's just on our general tax rate, it's eight-point-one-three ratio.
Without the library?
Without the library, we're eight-point-one-five. And the library's going to become a moot point because this will be about the last year of debt payment on the levers.
So, so the industrial rate right now in Squamish is about eight times the residential rate, which is above the VC average.
Just over the VC average as of this year.
As of this year.
So again, I think council's going to want to look at its ratio scheme, which you're going to want to look at in relation to your light industry, your business, everything, right? So you might want to revisit that more than just port. And we can certainly play with all those numbers, but until we have the revised rule, we're guessing. You know, we hope it's close, but as you know, we have rate currently a fairly significant twenty-million-dollar error in our completed rule, which we are trying to manually adjust in here to give us a rough idea that we're, where we are closer. But until the revised rule comes out, it's hard to do this conversation with you in terms of how it really is going to shake down. And again, we're comparing our average this year to last year.
So did you still have the product?
Yeah, I just, well, I just, I wanted to ask the question about how much the province was giving us, and I heard that. But to Councilor Rais's point, we do have another class four industry coming, so that's something that I hadn't contemplated, so I'll definitely have to think about that. I'm still not opposed also to incremental increases to get you up to this. So, but I mean, what Doug said about our new port, we certainly don't want to set any kind of precedence where we're not getting our bank or a buck out of them.
Thank you. I've just been listening to the conversation and thinking over the last few days after reading your letter, and I still can't come up with the win-win. I mean, we have worked so hard to address a lot of the infrastructure and strategic plan, infrastructure needs, but also our strategic plan in this budget. And we've been cutting it back and cutting it back and I think council's pretty satisfied with where it is. And so I'm, you know, the letter certainly provides arguments, but I don't see, the solution is not clear to me that this is a win-win for the community and for the port. And I think that's what I'm struggling with still, is how to make this a win-win. Because our small business owners, you know, are going to pay a lot more if we need a higher revenue ask. And so I don't want to do that. I've got people coming to me in the community on a regular basis saying, my taxes went up by, or my assessment went up by this much, what's that mean for me? How do I possibly anticipate what that payment might be? And, you know, we've had to put up on our website information so that citizens can figure out how they might be paying their taxes that they know are going to be going up. So there's, there is anxiety in the community about what this will mean for everybody. And so, you know, for me, I'm sitting here, I just can't see a pathway yet. And maybe that's not to say that there isn't one, but it's not clear to me. And I'm not sure that council sees a big place in its budget where it would be willing to say, okay, let's, you know, cut two-hundred-thousand dollars here so that we can make room for the port. We would have to cut some major projects.
I would appreciate, I know, I appreciate that, for sure. And that is why we had the conversation back in October with the district. And we wanted to have the conversation early before it was factored into the budget, you know, because then, then maybe there's a start to the conversation. And I mean, obviously, this is a philosophical aspect of it, but also the practicality of it as the budget gets put together. So, you know, we don't, we would like to, we presented something that we thought was the cleanest way to approach this, I guess is what we're trying to say. Whether that is, you know, an interim relief of all of it, or whether it's like Ted suggested, an incremental to get it to where it should be, just so we can figure it out on the, on the other angle that we're going in with the province, that's, you know, simply what we're trying to, to work together with you on trying to figure out that solution. And that's, I think, the impetus of the first meeting we had back in November, to say, let's put a, let's put a committee together. And that didn't really, and that may not have been the right solution at the end of the day, but that's how we can understand, it's a bit complex. And it's maybe how the best way to kind of having these conversations and having those that know the technical aspects, you know, more so than some of us in the room, is how we get to a point where we have something that's palatable for everybody.
And the other part of it is, the port has to remain competitive to stay here. And in the letters that have been sent from myself and from Squamish Terminals, it's identified some of the strains that the terminal is always operating under and has to work hard to keep a breast up and a head up. And when we get hit with the increase in taxes, it doesn't do anything for our competitive position.
I appreciate that. Okay, this is, this pretty much sets a really good course for the conversation when we get into the rate discussion. And I appreciate what Councilor Elliott said about, find, you know, that we maybe can't see a way forward, but maybe we can go away and think about this a little bit more when we come to that rate discussion, because it is a difference in rate classes as well. And, you know, I, a top of mind for me today is the tax caps that American companies get to come to BC to do films. They're at sixteen percent capped. And that doesn't create employment for us, yet we have incentives within the district created in order to support that one industry. And I appreciate that the port has been around for a very long time and has created employment in this community for a very long time. And while we support film and, you know, we have, we have a position created, we do a lot to support film in this, in this region, but, you know, it doesn't create the employment that we need. So I'm going to be taking that away and I do think that it deserves some consideration. So I really appreciate you coming up today. Thank you so much. And we will move on to the agenda.
Thank you very much for your time.
Yes, thank you. Yes, thank you. Very nice. And so with, from here.
It's a humble word.
Look at the screen. Need to look at the chairs. Chair Chappell, bear with me today. Got a little flat-footed here today. So the, the key thing that we're back to revisit today is whether the financial plan can go forward. So, and that's going to come down to a couple of different things in council's mind. First off, as you know, we were, we were looking at a set tax rate that was about seven-point-seven percent tax revenue increase at that point. We shook that down. It looks like it's under five percent in terms of effective tax increase. It's like four-point-six-five percent. If you're, having said that, absolutely, we need to look at distribution of how, just because we're looking at the effective tax increases, how that impacts average home owners versus something else. That's still out there. That's still questionable. Basically, all I'm saying is we're going to take all tax rates and we're going to lift them about five percent. Where there's a cap, it's going to bump into the cap and we might have to lift everything else a little more to make that happen. But how it shakes down within each individual class, back to that proverbial average household, right, will be a whole other number again. So we can look at all of that. If council really needs to do that to get to the financial plan, we can certainly have a preliminary discussion or look at that today if you really feel like you can't, you can't possibly move forward with the financial plan until you have those answers. Or you can decide that you're happy with your financial plan and we'll address how that distributes before we do the tax rates by law. So those are kind of the two burning questions in front of you. We also have a couple of key things that council has asked us specifically to bring back for further discussion. I have here that we have had some correspondence around senior center gates. And I'm wondering, do we really need it? Is it overkill, et cetera? So that's one of the questions that has come up. We also have some discussions around potentially adding to the budget for mileage for committee numbers, including the ADP. And there's been some discussions around calculating the adventure center parking. If we are going to proceed with the lease, then looking at revenue and potential additional costs that council might want to do to that space. So there's a couple of questions that we were asked to bring specifically back to this table for further discussion today, not the least of which was, the reason we are back here or we reported another two weeks before with the buy law was to really have a sober second thought and decide if there's anything else in the budget that we would like to reduce to ensure that we are coming out or have done our due diligence to make sure this is the lowest financial plan that covers what this, what the council is looking to do. Thanks.
Yeah, just, we also had, I don't think you were in the room, actually, we had a presentation this morning with respect to Wi-Fi in Brennan Park. And that number, including operating costs, a very rough calculation, would be about ten thousand dollars. So we might say yes or no to that. And the other is, that one letter that I wanted to pull with respect to some part of playground equipment, worthy ask, and that was about fifteen thousand dollars. Going, I think it was around fifteen thousand, something like that. I'm rounding that up. So just, to my perspective, those are additions to the discussion.
The senior center gates was, correct me if I'm wrong, was that twenty thousand?
I don't know. It was twenty-five.
We do have some adjusted numbers and some pictures which will clarify what was presented at the town hall meeting, which wasn't quite what the project was by the seniors. We have some pictures of what exactly the proposal is and what it is going to encompass. It's a little bit scaled back from what the seniors had presented. And Mr. Hoskin does have some better refined numbers and better project.
I agree.
Oh, you have a question?
I was so getting right into that. Unconsciously.
Can I say? Chair Chappell, do you matter?
While Tim is getting set up, might be a good opportunity to update council that Brennan Park Recreation Center, we did have a break-in last night. What stopped the lead, what the RCP lead, is that somebody like hid and waited till the facility was shut down and then broke into the offices. I don't have exact, I don't think they got away with much detail. It's timely.
It's a timely discussion. Thank you, Chair, and that committee. My name is Tim Hoskin, Director of Recreation Services. We did have a break-in last night. Of course, all the details aren't, aren't available yet. It was not a sophisticated paper. Looks like they publicly hid within Brennan Park and came out with one's whole staff had moved on. They broke the window on the arena side, customer service area, where you can pay go for a drive and skate. Then they went into the customer service area, they rifled through desks, then they went into the booking area, then they went into the concession and they drank juice boxes.
I'm going to go jet.
went into the booking area, then they went into the concession, and they drank juice boxes.
I'd like to look at that.
And then they tried to break into the ATM. So a very cursory scan does not look like anything significant has been stolen. It does highlight the concern to protect computers, protect files, protect the contents of that important information. Any questions on that before jumping?
Just a couple. What's damage roughly you figure?
They've broken a window, and they've damaged the ATM, which is not our property. I don't know if it recalls being repaired. I anticipate the damage will be less than our deductible, so it will need to be evened by our maintenance or program staffs. So we'll have those discussions. We, of course, we couldn't enter the customer service area this morning because it was now active crime scene, and they had any forensics, and we're checking for interference, that sort of thing. I'm hoping we're open now. I haven't checked in for the last couple of hours, but of course, people, they don't want to turn truck, people swimming or skating, so they were given free access today. The impacted staff were that there was glass everywhere and their items were scattered about. So they've been working in other areas, and so it's been cleaned up.
Follow-up on it. Do we have motion sensors in there at all when places shut? Was the place actually completely closed at that point?
It was completely closed. We, at 3:00 P.M., we checked in, our supervisor checked in this morning on security controls. There was not any vehicles in the parking lot or anything suspicious that we noted. They checked all the doors, all the doors were locked. With... Yeah, I don't know if you want to talk about the security of a car panel.
Yeah, I'm just curious if the motion sensors went on to detect that. Yeah, we can talk about that later. And the security on all of our computer hardware and stuff in there is all, that's all password protected on all that stuff, right?
And all our computers are locked in there?
Well, not locked down. Their desktop desk is similar to what is in council chambers or in the hall.
Tim, did you have a question or anything?
Yeah, I was going to say, the guy got away with a bunch of chocolate bars. What is our deductible?
On the property?
Well, just curious.
I know it's 25 for liability, but I have to check property.
So it wasn't a break-in. The guy hid in there.
But he did break into the customer service.
But he was inside the building.
We think that is illogical if all the doors were checked in and such.
I just don't want to see a $50,000 request for financing for a system.
Okay.
Thank you. Moving on to the senior centers. So this is timely. The budget request was for $25,000, and where we, our maintenance supervisor sent some investigation, and the actual cost to do the customer service area in Cafe is approximately $15,000. And this is for a system that would be a roll-down shutter that would allow air through, would have a door in it, or be able to open in case of a fire, would be tied to the fire system. So according to our maintenance supervisor, it is quite aesthetic. I haven't seen the pitch yet. To only do the customer service area is about $7,000, and that would be the priority area. The rationale for this is our customer service area in offices at the senior center, they must be staff or maintenance security to protect our office equipment. So we have computers, we have photocopier, of course, we have files back there. And in my opinion, it's much more cost-effective option to have a security gate when we are open and don't want to have customer service staff in place than to pay for customer service staff to do that. This request, this rationale is consistent with the district hall, the recreation center, adventure center, library, and just pretty much standard operating procedure. The front reception desk in Service Church, I know all of you have seen it, is fairly open. There is a little gate on the back left-hand side to gain access, but anyone concerned can just pop open the counter as it is. As I mentioned, it would be an overhead storage unit, would be about 12-inch blockhead. There would be no requirement for four volts, which would potentially be a tripping hazard. This would tie into the power line, so it would open automatically, otherwise staff would have to be close on site. Front desk, just some more pictures from behind the desk. Items at risk that you can see there are electronics, computers, photocopier phones, files, and information. So the two options, the one on the one, or the one, the option number one on the left is what we have a price for. That's approximately $7,000, maybe as low as five, but maybe very deep subliminal budget. And that would go from one wall to another. This would not go into the closet, which was a concern of the seniors, that they would lose potentially closet space. Option number two, I anticipate this would be more. We don't even know if it's doable yet, but that would be a roll-down type shutter right on top of the customer service desk. It would open up more space, but certainly more costly, probably technically more costly, and we're not sure about the price yet, so I'm hesitant to say that's something we can do at this point. I've mentioned this already. For the cafe, what was proposed is a, this is the... Can I get it up? About there. So this is the kitchen area here. There is a roll-down shutter and a door we can make lockable here. It would require securing the cash register here. Of course, the cash drawers removed, not in operation already. And here is a coffee, coffee cross, coffee maker. Here is plates, utensils, that sort of thing. And the food services provider has some items for sale in fridge or freezer right in this area. So what was proposed was to put an additional screen here, just to close this area, and to secure all of those items. I think in consideration to taxpayer prepared and to make this as doable as possible, that we put this one on hold, and we will work with the food service provider, because those items are actually his, to secure them every night before he closes up. So there will be some cost to him of opening and closing, will certainly take more time, but I think that can be managed. So with that, a little picture on the cafe, it'll give you a sense. We talked about that, items at risk. This would be the option here if we were to do it. We'd be crossing in front of that post. It is a change in the budget recommendation that we drop the cost from 25K to $7,000 and maintain that in the budget versus security screen to protect the office and customer service area. And we will work with the food services provider to secure the cash register. As I mentioned, cash is already removed as a potential business risk.
And that second one's the one that the seniors drawn up in arms about, right?
The seniors are... We haven't been able to find out what it is they want at this point. We have a meeting on Thursday, and we'll get into it for your discussion.
Well, I think that's the one.
Pardon me?
That's the one, the one in front of the kitchen.
The best of my understanding that I've heard from a couple of members of the seniors board is there was concern that it would impact the closet, that there would not be enough closet area, and that it would be aesthetically not pleasing. My sense is that they were concerned that it's going to be more institutionalized, they won't be allowed to go in the back, that sort of thing. I think these can be overcome. I think there's a big sense of change going on there, and that we've got to work on, of course, with them and building trust. And at the end of the day, looking in the center and adult-oriented thing is a good thing, and this is something that needs to come up, otherwise it's going to be a cost prohibitive to staff.
They won't be able to get free Peppsi's.
Yeah, so basically, cutting to the chase, we added $25,000 place marker in the budget. So if we take the $7,000 out for the gate that you proposed, leaves $18,000, so jumping ahead to those other items that I brought up earlier, like, just to randomly throw them out there, the Willow Park, the Wi-Fi, the parking lot of the adventure center, the concrete items to go in there, I think that was $8,000 or between $5,000 and $8,000. So we should maybe be considering those items with that remainder of the 18 left over, how we could use that and apply it to some of those items.
Pete's taking over for Doug and spending money.
Just cut to the chase, bud.
The ADP, the ADP guys that drive up from Vancouver. Well, we're talking about these things. I'm just trying to...
Now, let's finish this conversation first. So...
That's pretty on the wrong.
Does somebody want to move to...
So I'll move at the $25,000. We reduce the $7,000 quoted for security screen to protect the office and customer service area.
Okay, seconded by Peter Kent. So may I have any questions about that or concerns? Okay, any questions on favor, closed, motion carries. Thank you, Tim.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tim.
Okay, on the other items.
So you have a post where would you like to comment? Your Wi-Fi will hurt.
Do we have a cost for the barriers to the efficiency of the parking lot?
I'm sorry, I don't have the moment.
I have written down $12,000 from our last meeting that I would want to get.
Thank you.
If I may, yeah, if I may clarify too, I believe that we haven't looked at potential lease for it in the debt, so it goes to the potential wash. That's around that amount, because I believe the lease was, seems to be about $16,000.
$16, actually.
Thanks.
Yeah, I just, well, I want to add something to the list that came up last week, and that's the ADP, the advisory design panel, we have 10 people that travel from either Whistler or Vancouver to come up and sit on that. And they say that any other committees, they sit down and they get their gas money. So we're not giving them gas money, and everywhere else they go, they get gas money. So I just, $6,000.
Is that what I read?
Oh, we're getting up to the premium taxes.
Well, it's just...
Does anybody want to follow up on that? Jason, you want to go?
How many, like, what's the composition of the ADP right now? Because I remember when I was on it, it was mostly local people.
Mostly people from out of town.
Who happened to be developers in this community.
No, no, they're architects from Whistler, they're architects from Vancouver.
I don't know. I would suggest that perhaps there might be professional or other benefits that are gained by participating on the ADP, because people get credit, don't they, for architectural ins, JBC and...
It is not uncommon to reimburse for travel. And we do have four members who are community, which is a good thing, because you don't want to get into a situation where you have all of your community members as locals, because there's sometimes interests. You know, a lot of architects are from outside the community, and that's good, because the local architects present their projects here at ADP, so there's a bit of a need to have outside professionals. And so other municipalities do reimburse. And we are busy, so often all two meetings a month, which means more trips. And they've been, the members have been really good, making sure that there's more. If there was a number of, I think, 5,000, it would probably work to cover it all.
Okay, most other costs. Doug, do you want to speak to that?
Yeah, and I can support this. I think it's, you know, these are volunteers, I think, and we don't pay them anything, and they do us significant service. And all the things I go to, whether it's regional district or on behalf of municipality or something like that, I give 52 cents a pound, which I think is the standard rate, so it doesn't make any sense to me to shortchange them. I think we should be grateful for the contribution, but it was a very small amount towards that.
Do you want to put that forward, Doug?
I'll move $5,000 in the budget for mileage for ADP to government rate.
Seconded by Ted. Someone speak to that?
As opposed to the government rate, there's a couple of municipalities that pay a flat rate, and we would like the ability within that 5,000 to see what is best deal for Swarish and where people are coming from and what that actually plays out as. And then we would bring forward a policy or a bylaw amendment to include that in the ADP.
So then I'll amend my motion and delete the words "at the government rate" and "just at rate to be recommended by staff."
Anybody else want to speak to that? Okay, I'm going to call...
Who's on second?
Yep, by Peter. All those in favor, opposed, motion carries. So $5,000 to the ADP for the ADP. Thank you. Okay, do you want to deal with all of these things, and do you want to just go through each individual item? We have Wi-Fi for Brennan Park, Willow Park, 12K for the ADP, my energy's done, seniors is done, 12K for the parking lot. Let's talk, can we talk about the Wi-Fi in Brennan Park? Why is it $10,000? Yeah, is that really for infrastructure, for the ADP infrastructure as well as...
And, if I may, to the chair, the other thing would be the labor to install all that stuff, because there'd be considerable labor, wiring it all together, and testing and all of that, and making them go around and making sure that it's sufficient.
Can I just ask one more question on that? I know that we do that generally for the municipality. Would it be possible to get a provider to do it instead, with pet installation?
That's what we have now.
Well, it's the general Shaw, it's not hiring, it's not, what we have now is the Shaw router that goes up that you have to log into. And if we just got service from Shaw or service from TELUS and made a competitive bid, is that something that's possible? So it's often made to include installation for lunch. Karen, Lynn?
My sense on this one is that Shaw's contract is up for renewal next year, and I'd rather move this into next year's budget and just do a full evaluation of how we want to provide Wi-Fi according to the digital strategy and not rush into anything at this point, and tie it in with contract renewals and figure out what the best deal is for us. And I recognize comments, comments of sort of keeping it in-house, easier for them, and that's their preference, but I'd rather defer it to next year's budget. It's not a huge priority. If it was a little bit less and pretty easy to do, I'd say go for it, but I don't have an appetite for it at this point.
Robin, Ted?
It's sort of now that, given Councilor Elliott's comments, but it was through the cable service provider that this would be, and so it would be on our system, our network, but we use various providers right now, and so it would be increasing now.
Ted?
I'm with Karen 100%.
Yeah, I agree, and I think because it's, there's a bigger picture for Wi-Fi in the district, it doesn't just include Brennan Park, but it includes some hotspots downtown, a few other things that we've raised during the digital strategy, trying to get a handle on opening up a corridor that's sort of active downtown where we could have, everybody can have access to Wi-Fi, it's not just based off a certain provider. So I think there's a broader picture to look at here, so I agree, I think pushing it down the doors, but it's probably a better idea.
So I'll move, we refer discussions on Wi-Fi to the 2018 budget.
Seconded by Councilor Kent. All in favor, closed, motion carries.
Can I add to some clarification on that? Would you actually like us to put it, reflect it in 2018, or just bring it back to discuss for 2018?
Discuss, I guess, we'd have to... Discuss, I guess, we'd have to start a discussion and then maybe we'll have the discussion earlier before that, but not this year.
Yeah, refer, can we refer it to the digital strategy committee or?
Well, Shaw's coming back.
Yeah, I'd like to refer it to the digital strategy committee for discussion as a more comprehensive plan for wifi in Swamish. Do we need to move that or?
Be part of my motion.
Okay, another question? Okay, next, let's go to the parking lot. I would like to see this play out before adding 12K to the budget and see if it actually needs, if it, I wouldn't agree with spending 12K on bouylers this year.
I actually think this would be money well spent because I think if we can avoid headaches, it's, it's really not maximize that space. And we know it'll be busy this summer, even with the expansion of this smokeless park. And if we can offset it with the revenue we'll achieve this year, I think it actually makes sense to really organize that space so that people are parking efficiently, that the aisles aren't wider than they need to be. And we have a revenue source to pay for it, so I'd actually be interested in this one.
Anybody else?
I'm with Karen.
Hey, I would say that our revenue is being spent already. We've had to move $110,000 forward in our budget for the smokeless this year to prematurely do the smokeless. We took it out of other things, but we did bump the smokeless from 2018 to 2017. Instead of doing, which was a significant hit in this year's budget. As well, we have to build the crosswalks and we have to maintain the bathrooms, which should eat up the entire lease agreement. Anybody, Doug?
Yeah, and I, parking in that space is never efficient. I mean, you can go there any day when there's parking and it's just, it's a bit of a free-for-all. So I think we have to take the step of getting this organized and it has not yet been booked in the budget. Lease revenue has not yet been booked in the budget. So we bring it in, we pay out this 12, if it is 12, out of that. And there'll be money left over for other things, so I think this is money well spent this year.
If I may, yeah, to the chair, I also think it's a good idea in that if we're going to have Crystal Term come in there, we should, we should get a handle on this parking situation at the same time as we're looking at having them come in so that those two can work together in conjunction. You know, get their footprint established, get the parking established so that we can move forward lockstep and maintain some control over that lot.
Is it, Linda, do you want to speak please?
Yeah, just to aid in the discussion, $68,500 was reallocated from the Denfield Park, which was spread over 2017, 2018 to go towards the smokeless parking lot to take advantage of refill, which we estimate would have cost us 30 to 40, so just to help with the discussion.
Thank you. Yeah, the idea of taking money away from parks to make parks smaller, to build parking lots, I'm ethically opposed to. But I appreciate that people want to make the lot more efficient. But I think that this should be a tenant improvement and not, since we've given them such a good lease rate of $1,300 a month, I think that having the lot improved should be a tenant improvement because it is the project of a business, a private business, going into the lot that is requiring the efficiency be done, so I'll be opposing this. 12K is, could be spent in other places, I'm sure. As well, the bathroom expenses, you know, $1,300 doesn't mean to buy a one-bedroom apartment per month in Swamish anymore. So I don't think it's adequate to be able to pay 12K and the rest of the smokeless and the crosswalk. I'd rather see, I actually rather see the amount of expense that we have to pay this year to do the upgrades all in one thing. And maybe have that in a different conversation. Seeing all the expenses in one place, like the crosswalk expansion and maybe have staff bring back the parking lot efficiency, the crosswalk expansion, the signs and all the other requirements. As well, I'm not sure we know whether we're going to need bathrooms yet, if they can use that crosswalk. Because of the industry, we have to look into industry movement because that road is classed. We're not able to put a raised crosswalk in that area, I don't think. I'd be interested to find out, so. Karen?
Let's put forward a motion that we put $12,000 towards organizing the Adventure Center parking lot alongside Crystal Term and that we use the revenue from the lease to offset that expense.
Seconded by Council Kent. Any more discussion? I will say that, you know, without having a comprehensive look at what we're already spending, I would prefer to move this discussion to a regular council meeting. I guess this has to be moved to a regular council meeting anyways for discussion? Okay, yeah, so I think if it's moving to a regular council meeting for discussion anyways, I'd be happy to support it for discussion. But when it comes forward, could staff bring all the expenses? Crosswalks, industrial route, can we have a raised crosswalk in an industrial route? I don't think we can. Just all of the changes that have to go on that area and if we have to reroute the industrial traffic.
So, sorry, councilor, again, missing it, so, so beyond the bouylers, do you want to talk about what other site improvements were not going to happen?
All the site improvements that will come out of the lease right this week, yeah. No, I mean, I just want to know what are taxing people for, for a private business. I think it will have a baby, but I'm, you know, it's done now, so I may actually support it if it's a reasonable number. But I'm most interested in the raised crosswalk and what we have to do to get kids across the street. Because that is a safety issue for the community. So if we have to reroute the industrial traffic, we need to engage the industrial users in the area. Okay, all in favor, opposed, Susan, anybody else?
Really?
Yeah, not bad, you guys. More money in the budget, so I'm not, I'm not, I'll actually probably not support much more money going into the budget at this rate, so.
I'll pay for my taxation.
That's true. And I still get another chance to change my mind if. Okay, $15,000 for Willow Park. Is it, I can't see $15,000.
It's 14 change. The number's in here, but, so 15,000, we just find it.
15,627 or 14,000.
I think based on earlier conversation, our direction was to have our staff over this year look at how we are funding parks and the rehabilitation of parks and designing, not, but looking where high density is and where we need to be upgraded. So my feeling is that Willow Park got a great upgrade and we need to be looking at further upgrades to playgrounds, not just Willow Park, but all of them to match their use with, in sort of a more organized way. I understand that they wanted phase two, but I'm not sure that I have appetite for phase two at this point. Our focus is on creating a park in Denfield, which doesn't have a park. And I'm happy to circle back around if it looks like the density and the demand is there for Willow Park in 2018. But that's kind of my thought right now, is that we need to look across the whole district and not just focus all of our resources in the short term in one park. So I'd rather have that more complete view before I move on.
Thanks.
Yeah, I'm with Karen.
No, I wasn't, I didn't put my hand up either.
What she said.
Jason?
I don't know, I mean, we have room in the budget for it. They have a very specific ask and, I mean, in terms of the wider planning, we know that didn't need to start this year. So, you know, it's going to be another few years before anything gets done. So I think that this will open, it is a good addition to, to the park and it is a high-density area, so, yeah, I would support this.
Yeah, the reason I'd ask that this be pulled for discussion is when it first came to us, going by memory, but it was $35,000 or $50,000, I think, was the, was the ask at that time, for something that was considerably more elaborate. And so this is obviously reduced. And as the writer pointed out, she was encouraged to bring back something and I was, I have to say, I was probably one of the people that said, you know, if you've got a phase two, let's see it and we'll have a discussion about it. So, so here we are. So my thought was we could go ahead with this. I wasn't frankly thinking about other park activities that we would do because I wasn't thinking that this would take away from anything else. I was just thinking that I could support this on the understanding it did not come from taxation. So once again, I was going to go to staff and ask them.
Pick it up, pocket.
My poor piggy bank.
Ask them, well, it's our piggy bank.
I think smash it already.
Ask them if there are other alternatives for funding and, and the one that frankly I was thinking about was surplus. And, and it's, I've had a couple of offline discussions with people, I'm not going to go in the whole thing right now. We'll have a discussion about the budget sometime in the future and one of them, from my perspective, will be about surplus. But, but wondering if there was money from surplus that could fund this if we chose to do that.
Certainly, councilor.
Do we have 15,000 in surplus?
Yes.
How much do we have in surplus?
It's a secret.
I know, because you know, don't you?
It's not a secret, I have to work on a very tiny screen. But let me see if I can find sort of the last update of it. We haven't finished this year, obviously, so I'll bet your office to how.
Okay.
I'll hope that is right now, just if you provide me a moment and speak amongst yourselves.
Yeah, Ted.
Figure out roughly where we're at.
Do you want to speak?
Well, we can see what surplus is, I mean, I.
And we usually, and I apologize to this council, because usually we do talk to you about where working hours members are and how that relates to our targets, and I don't know that you did receive that, seriously.
So, well, how much was the first phase, how much did the first phase cost us? 50,000?
No.
I don't think it was that much. I can't remember.
More than 50,000, yeah. We did spend a lot. It was nice because there was a lot of volunteers and.
I would also, I agree with Karen that it should be done in a more comprehensive, if you start picking pieces of equipment and paying for it by reserve. I really appreciate this, the community engagement that this group brought forward for Willow Park. It definitely is an amazing space right now. But I think that without looking at the rest of the community and, you know, that $68,000 can come in of Denfield, we're not going to put that in from surplus. So they get a smaller park this year. I think we really have to do a better comprehensive park strategy and figure, in general, where we can fund playground equipment from and how we can get each community better parks and access. Is that, unless we have millions in the surplus and then I.
Certainly, the surplus will be robust enough regardless of which number to handle 15,000. The last, the last update.
There's something on there.
I just need to find out what has already been designated to other purposes, so I have to align our systems.
So it's quite.
So bear with me, discuss.
Maybe academic, so just so we have a chance to make a decision one way or the other. I'll move that we have $15,000 in the budget funding from surplus for the recommended expansion of Willow Park.
Seconded by Jason. If we have a robust surplus, I think that having one more piece of equipment just to support a community initiative that's come forward, I'd be willing to support it. Sorry, I know. Okay, is there any more comments on that?
And I just want to say that we also need to recognize that a lot of the labor that has been done has saved the district money in terms of staff time or anything like that. And so that's why I just feel like this particular ask is, is of good value. And I look forward to the day when we have a more robust plan. I'll work there.
Yeah, I appreciate all the work the community has done, but I also know that there's people in the community that also want to see some of our park space left as more natural playground areas. So not everything in constructed built environment, but logs and rocks and trees. And Willow Park is a small park, and so I just want to not rush into buying more equipment when what might be needed is some other stuff. So that's why I want to wait for a more comprehensive thought. And just for clarity, Denfield is a $100,000 budget, not 16,000.
It was more. It was a hundred thousand. I think that, I think these equipment, this equipment was chosen by the neighborhood. So, and I agree with Council Black and Wolf that it's going to save staff time because they've already done all the legwork and that it's, and if staff feels like we have enough in surplus, I'd be willing to support this. Because of the amount of work the community did and I will, I will. Hold oppression, all in favor? Opposed?
Motion fails.
Motion fails. Does the mayor count for the talking?
Well, I mean, I like the, you know, lots, lots, I was like, lots, yeah.
So the motion fail.
So not the 15,000 surplus?
Or at all.
I don't, not.
Karen? Actually, what I'd like to do is, I'd like to suggest that we put this on the next agenda when we're discussing the remaining budget items, just recognizing that there is a member of council who's not present today. So just to have a full opportunity to consider this particular item.
And we do have a very robust surplus from what we're looking at here, close to 6 million right now in general.
Six million? Oh, Karen. I thought you said that, six million. Oh, my, playgrounds.
It's all in, remember, all in relation, ten fund is the big one.
But just on that, what's the point of voting if someone's missing, if you just could bring them back when they show up? I mean, that doesn't make sense to me.
To the chair, to staff, I'm understanding this is our last kick of the can and the next thing that's coming back to us is the financial plan bylaw in the next regular business meeting. So this is it, and we are missing one person, but this is it. That's why we waited two weeks because Council Black and Wolf wasn't here last time. And I actually asked staff to defer so that you had a chance to be here for the last discussion. And the mayor knew that when she put this on the agenda that she would be here, but this is, this is the last go.
Okay, so Willow Park, is there any other budget items that anybody else would like to speak to? And you think that wants to be pulled from the budget? There's nothing that. Yeah, I, I am concerned about the tax rate, that's all I have to say, is that I have trouble discussing what I want, if I'm comfortable with everything that's in the budget before discussing our multipliers. If our multipliers end up at, right now, Christine was mentioning that the business multiplier is at 2.8, I'd be comfortable at 2.1 for our businesses this year, which is a general, that's the VC average. I don't want to be above the VC average. I spoke to the Committee Tax Association about this.
If I, if I may, I would, if that is a concern of the council, we can have a great discussion around taxes right now in terms of which rate classes really impact that effective tax rate.
That would be great.
The port, for instance, if you were to bring it down, so prior, prior to doing this, we were sitting at about a 4.2, so I'm just trying to remember the magic little number there, but we're sitting at a 4.65. Mr. Subcheck indicated that, you know, in Surrey they get the 19, so I ran 19 for the model. And if doable, you go up to about 5.28 to make that work. So it's not, it's not shoot because there's only one way to do it. So you could potentially affect that. If I tweak the business one even by .1, right now we're at 2.82. If I tweak it even to 2.7, that gets exponentially bigger because you're assuming business price. So this will be a dance, I don't know that you could cut the budget enough to go to where you're talking about 2.1. And again, our provincial, based on 2016, the provincial average for business was 2.62, just to put in context. So we are about .2 above, in terms of ratio, above provincial average right now. But just to give council some context around what we would need to look at more holistically when we got there. Just to give you some order of magnitude in terms of how much you're willing to play with the rates or in how much that's going to impact your financial plan if you wanted to do that.
Jason and Doug?
I'm pretty comfortable with the ratios as they stand right now. I don't think there's any large desires. And as I said before, in the earlier part of the meeting, I don't support any changes to the board class. And, you know, I think we might be in a better position to explore some changes as to the business ones when the revitalization tax exemption runs its course and we're getting our full revenue from our entire commercial tax base. So, you know, there might be some room to do some adjustments in the future. But right now, I think it's, everybody's being squeezed in some way or another. And we all got a shoulder to burden, you know, in a fair way.
Yeah, thanks. Same comment. I'm also happy with the rates. I was on council, it was my first year in council, actually, 2009, our first budget, where we reduced the commercial rate to 2.7 at that time, which at that time was the B C average. And that was our intent, was to hit the B C average to make the town attractive for investment. I don't get the feedback. I'm not directly in the business community anymore. I don't get the feedback from the business community indicating they think the rate is somehow outrageous. It's more concerned about other business issues, zoning, all the other things that make a business work. So, so I'm not inclined to reduce it. I will say, and I'm not an expert on assessment and so forth, but the city of Vancouver, and I follow their politics just through the media channels, had a six times the residential rate for their commercial rate. And people were screaming. And so they started on a program of trying to rationalize the two. And they're down to four point something now, but they were bringing it down by point one a year just because a big jump from, you know, of point five or point six or point seven would have just thrown the whole thing off into chaos. So they've been taking it down in very, very small increments to try and get to a point where we're happier. So, so going from 2.7 or 2.6 to 2.1 to me is, is almost a mind-boggling jump. That will have a huge impact on residential rates. And I think the impact on residential rates this year is going to be painful enough for some people. So I'm not in favor of adjusting it. Light industrial also was brought down to, at the same time, that same budget year, to a number that, and I'm going by old numbers, was three and a half times the residential rate. And once again, that was close, if not right on, the B C average, at least at that point. And so those two, from my perspective, those two have kind of tracked the B C average. And if we were going to change them at all, I'd want to really be relatively close to the B C average as opposed to taking a significant deviation from them. The heavy industry rate, and at the time we only had the one, and that was the port. And it was capped by legislation. So I think I've mentioned this before, we dropped our heavy industry rate to 27.5 from whatever it was in wood fiber pulp mill days. And I don't know, I can't remember. But really, it was just a matter of, we have one, there's the other one, we'll put them the same. And now we're faced with the possibility of the first other class four property coming on stream.
And I just, I may just end, but I'm going to give you a couple of business rates. West Vancouver, for instance, business rate, 4.36 last year. So we're, you know, again, you can't, I never liked rates because rates really depend on the base and the, you know, because you know the mill rate, so it's not always a great indicator, both the rates versus ratios and things. But just as an idea, and they were at 2.81 ratio. So, you know, again, it's, you can look at averages, but there will be distorters and outliers that change that based on their council philosophies about what they're trying to do and what they're trying to promote. And that's, again, a philosophical discussion that I'd like to bring back for our tax discussions when we're going to do the tax rates bylaw, if council is comfortable with that.
Yeah, well, I know I'm not going to be happy with the tax increases because I'm going to get a lot of flack. Well, I mean, she needs to own the Brexit. Anyway, but I do think that, you know, like for next year, I thought, well, I'm going to start complaining early this year so that next year we can kind of keep it down. And I think what we have to do in the district is we have to get a handle on our spending. And when Trump said he's going to freeze government, blah, 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 I thought, oh, that's not an idea. You know, and I'm kind of being sarcastic a bit there. But I do think, you know, like the O C P is going to be done. And don't have all the resources going into S O D C. And there's all these things that we've taken off the table. And I'm going to expect next year to see the district spend no more than this year to help try and keep the taxes reasonable next year for everybody. So that'll be the song I'm singing.
There is a letter that came through to the budget feedback website. And are we responding to this? Because there was a question about, I'm worried about my tax bill. Can you give me some reassurances what happened, some insight into taxes, which we can't do? But do we communicate back to people where they can get information? Like that video that we have on B C assessment about how it's structured? So is someone making sure that's happening?
So for my part, we are usually reverberating from communications. Those are all two of those things that we don't, we respond to right away from an email perspective. And I don't refer to, we start with in terms of letters and correspondence.
Amen. So we respond right when we get them. If they're addressed to council, we acknowledge, receive them and advise them what's going to happen. And then, because sometimes there's an outcome, you know, to the, to the correspondence. And then we follow up after the meeting, like the disposition of their inquiry list.
Thank you. Paula?
Yeah, and this, I'm just wondering if staff or council maybe, I'm not quite sure. So do we not deal with the port issue until we have the tax rate conversation? Or is there?
It's all just up to council. It's just difficult for us to be very specific about that until we have proper assessment based on all that we're dealing with in terms of definitively saying their rate will be X and that will be Y ratio. We're working with completed role. Like I said, you have some latitude because we don't want property owner in there. Sometimes you can tweak them a little bit without having as wide scale an impact as when you hit classes with more rate figures. So there is some latitude. That's why I was trying to give you a bit of sensitivity around if you want to take both rates down to nineteen period. But because, and only because Mr. Zepchek threw that number of there is being what Surrey pays right in terms of the tax year. But again, we're dealing with different assessment bases, different mill rates, different light factors. So, you know, and again, you can look at ratios, I can go up, look at what Surrey's ratio is. It really has to be a built-in Swamish philosophy. And, you know, do you want to look at major industry? If you do, then why don't we, let's go back and have another philosophical conversation about whether our light industry and our major industry rates are at the right rates.
Thank you. And I think that is a bigger discussion for me over here. And as well, you said the business tax rate is at 2.8, it's almost at 2.9?
It's 2.82 in our modeling right now. Yeah, 2.82 in our modeling right now. And, and again, the B C average of all municipalities came out at 2.62 last year.
I'm interested in what Deb said. You said that we had capped it at 2.7?
It's not capped. Don't use the word capped. We have set it.
Set it at 2.7.
That was years ago.
And it's been consistently at 2.7? We've gone up this?
We had a financial policy that basically indicated we were trying to maintain the residential rates between 2.7 and 2.8. That was both the range. However, last year we had a discussion around stabilizing our ratios so that we could do some more of this definitive tax calculation discussion. And so last year, we landed on basically putting the utilities at 3.82, businesses at 2.82. The class eight and class nine recreation and farm down a straight ratio in relation to the homeowner of the residential. And then 2.8, 2.7 is, oh, sorry, that one, the farm and recreation and forests, we had at 2.82, same as business. And then, of course, the utility, the utilities are fairly high, that's about by law at forty. And then we have the port, which is capped on rates. And that means the ratios change a little bit depending because they're capped at a rate, if the best seller ratio shakes down.
Okay, thank you. Do you want to say something?
Well, yeah, just to Council Elliot's point about do we have to wait? And on this port question, if I understand, if we could, there being no other changes, we could go ahead with the bylaw on how much we're going to spend now because we haven't made any other suggestions apart from what we just discussed today. And the discussion around setting the rates, which is part of the port, could happen at a later date and not upset our timetable. Thinking out loud, so I wasn't thinking about making that decision today. And there's now two people missing from council. But thinking out loud, you know, what Council Elliot said is if there's going to be some scheme, whatever it might be, that we thought was somehow politically acceptable, how would it be a win-win? And whatever scheme might be proposed, I speak for myself, I would not be in favor of funding it out of general taxation or transferring the impact of that to the taxpayer. But now I'm thrilled to hear we have six million dollars in surplus. And, and is it realistic to think, and I'm really just thinking out loud. I know this is an open meeting, but it's a budget thought. If they needed time to come up to speed, and I can understand even with a big business like that, when you get a significant hit, maybe you anticipated it, maybe you didn't, all in one year versus staggering it in over two or three or four years, whatever it might be. And I know they're after the province to try and change the legislation, which might give them some relief, but it's not going to happen now. And we're facing an election and there's some uncertainty around that now. So it's uncertain how long it might be before they have some, some definitive answer on that. But if we entered into an arrangement with them to phase it in incrementally, as Council Prior put it, over, say, three years, but we were looking for the win for the community and provide that over the next three years after that, they pay it back with interest. Are those types of things realistic? Is that?
That would be difficult and not what I suggest to you, to be honest.
No, well, that's the answer I probably need then.
Yeah, that one would be, I'd have to really take that away and think about it. And you really want to think about what that looks like in terms of the real tax revenue increase next year. Because all essentially we would be doing is supporting whatever projects or expenses this year with a huge draw from our own provisions. And then next year we gain that back and it looked like our rates went, right? So I want you to think about that perception wise as well. Not to mention that I'm not really in the business of loaning money to private businesses. And in fact, the ministry has already told me point blank, yet can't. So even though the port allows us to provide different tax rates, they have not provided me a scheme for loaning funds. So I think that there's a whole host of issues around that solution. I'm not a huge fan. On top of that, we are trying to stabilize. You know, part of our long-range financial solutions are looking at trying to get our capital injections to a certain level. Trying to get our special project envelopes to a certain level. Trying to get, we've already brought below most of those in terms of meeting the financial long-range targets. Although I understand what you're saying, it's short-term, it just seems like a long mechanism in terms of how we look at the budgets next year and things. So I would rather look at it from adjusting this tax rate than deciding that all the other rates are going to be a little more, absorb a little more. If you had a specific project, you wanted to accumulate it, you know, fair enough. But to just lump some thorough accumulated surplus, even to do that mechanism, I'd have to really pick projects and think about what are we funding and doing on this?
Okay, thank you.
So you would do that over like three-year period?
I'm suggesting I would rather not do that.
Oh, you'd rather not do that. And just thinking out loud, is the terminals planning an expansion?
I'm sorry, I can't speak to reports.
I mean, I heard they're planning an expansion. And I know that with custom along D C Cs and building penalties and blah, blah, blah.
Again, there is some flexibility to the rates. I think that probably in the big scheme of things, given that that is the effective tax rate goes within under 1% to do some of those things, probably a better route to go. My concern is that you might own a good business as well and that's going to have a bigger skew. So if you really want to do that, we really need to look at compressing your question.
Yeah, because dealing with rates, somehow, even if it's only small increments, it transfers the burden onto other taxpayers. And I think, I speak for myself, again, that's the principle I'm not happy to go to.
Now, you know, again, we can't take three in the surplus, we can't fund more than capital. Or we could decide to make, take that surplus draw and fund our capital reserves. That would probably, I would suggest doing things like that more because next year then maybe we don't do the 1% reserve contribution because we've made our targets for before doing annually, things like that. I think there's other ways to meet our financial future targets. But in terms of supporting more, don't really think that's, I guess. And it is a good question. Would you like us to look at moving surplus to reserve? Because we are undervalued in our capital reserves. We tend to consider this.
Well, it's a bigger discussion I wasn't intended to have here. I've spoken to Council Elliot about putting a discussion around reserves and budget debrief on a finance, not a community.
Which I think we have.
That'll come up eventually.
But again, if you'd like to do it with this budget here.
No, no, I wasn't thinking about that. Except for that other scheme I quoted.
Okay, you know, I can certainly research it if council's really interested. I think there's a slippery slope there in terms of really how it perception and how it translates next year when you come to major budget. It's going to look like major increases.
Yeah, no, and I take your point. And I accept that too. Thank you.
Is there anything else anybody wants to discuss? Is there any items in the budget that people want to pull out for discussion? And so everybody's pretty happy going forward with what's in the budget and to bring it into regular council meeting?
Just to clarify, the part that's coming in is how much we're spending. We're still going to have a discussion to finalize. Although we haven't suggested anything at the moment, at least not now. So, so we're still having a discussion to finalize the application. And that would happen when you get the final roll.
So there are two bylaws that we've passed as part of the annual financial plan and tax rate bylaws. So financial plan bylaws, what we're proposing, that we basically put the financial plan bylaw and the budget on the street now and we allow staff to proceed with those expenditure authorities. Then after, when the revised rule comes through, we have to set our tax rates. And that's where we look at ratios and distribution in terms of how we take that revenue from that financial plan and distribute it across the taxpayers. And so that would be something I think we should revisit once the revised rules are here. And hopefully there's no major surprises beyond what we're trying to factor in now. But, you know, again, it's, it's difficult. It's why a lot of municipal class of financial plans are made. Unfortunately, that cuts out a good quarter of the season of more than that, five months of workable season, I'm sure not.
Thank you. Is there any more? I'm just asking this for the public. Is there any more room for public engagement on the items that we've put forward as changes? I think we just added a little, the little bits in there. And all of these things come, everything that we've added today comes to regular council meeting for discussion. And then we'll be firm in what we have in our budget. And then it comes forward for adoption. Is that correct, after the ready of discussion?
Just a reminder, we bring you next the bylaw. And we're going to bring you a council report and we'll talk about that. If we receive more political feedback before there, you know, public feedback between then and now, we will certainly let you know that. And then you make a decision on pre-readings and on another meeting to make the final adoption. So there is a process here. If there's any other bylaws. So it's not necessarily a closed case. We just, I could get up now and bring it forward for formal consideration.
Thank you. I think the work that staff has done to get this budget here is absolutely memorable. I think we guys have done an amazing job this time. I really thought our, and as well as council, was really concise with their discussions and agreements and disagreements. So thank you all. Okay, is there anything else that we need to discuss or just get rid of that? Okay, that is all we have on our agenda today. Further budget amendments, discussion? Does everybody feel comfortable with everything? Okay. Okay. I will move to turn it. Seconded by Councilor Prior. Your thought, that was pretty great.